Good evening and welcome to tonight's School Committee meeting of Tuesday, August 10. As I'm going to call the meeting to order, and as we always do, I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'm going to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are competent, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. We're going to now open it up to public comment. I believe we have someone online on the Zoom, Dan Lieber?
Thank you very much. I sent a note off to our School Committee members, Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. Just want to reiterate what some of that is about for the public, and this is in support of student safety and the ability for the Superintendent to use best discretion with input from the local Board of Health and other public health officials to have masks and other mitigation techniques used for, to prevent COVID infections and things along those lines. So, my children will actually be returning to the regular Wakefield Public School classrooms in a more regular format for the first time in nearly eighteen months. We need them to remain safely wearing face masks indoors, following the guidance of the Centers for Disease Control and Epidemiology. We continue to follow health officials' recommendations. They're very clear as it relates to schools. And I quote, "Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students age two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status." Unquote. Especially with the contagious nature of these variants now in common circulation, including their presence in Massachusetts and the prevalence of spread among youth, this is of significant concern. We live in an area of substantial transmission, according to the CDC today. I have confidence the administration will appropriately handle special circumstances on case-by-case basis, as they may need to do so. I also respect parental responsibility and parents' ability to determine the best care for their own children. This extends to vaccines for those eligible to get them. I encourage every eligible person to get vaccinated, primarily as part of the social contract of living together. The next best option is masking. Masking has proved to be safe, reliable, and easy for all. Having expectations that everyone wears masks indoors regardless of vaccination status will remove stigmas for those who may not want to disclose their vaccination status nor health conditions. It will also protect students, including my own children, by reducing the risk of transmission of COVID and other communicable disease that extends beyond just COVID. As we have young children in our own home regularly who cannot get vaccinated, we take action to limit COVID exposure in particular. Having our community as a partner in this effort to halt the pandemic, at least until COVID is controlled locally, will be greatly appreciated. So, I know that decisions aren't being made tonight, but wanted to let the Superintendent and School Committee members know that there is community support for having a safe environment, and that includes having students wear masks and other mitigation methods that, as recommended by the CDC and local health authorities, to mitigate the dangerousness of things such as COVID, as well as other similar diseases. So, just wanted to let that be known, because there is unfortunately a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dan. WCAT team, do we have anybody else that is waiting for public comment? Or I guess I can ask the question, if there's anybody else on the Zoom that wanted to speak publicly, can you raise your hand so the WCAT team can see you? Okay. I am going to proceed then, and we're going to move to the consent agenda. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So, move that the School Committee approve the minutes of the July 13, 2021 School Committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the July 15, 2021 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the July 21, 2021 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? So, we've got a vote of five to zero, because we have two members missing tonight. Okay. Christine, I'm going to hand it over to you for business reports.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, you have two financial reports in front of you. The first one is the final financial report for fiscal '21. It's all 12 months, from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. And as you'll see, the ending balance for fiscal '21 for the local budget was $487. So, we fully spent the local appropriation. The negative balances on certain lines, we'll refer to when we talk about the budget transfers in a minute. The next report is for the first month of July, so it'll just show you that the appropriation from the town was 45,343,200. And you'll just see the first couple of month of payrolls and some accounts payable. We don't have encumbrances yet. We will be encumbering for staff salaries once the teachers are on board, and for utilities and transportation, things that we know we're going to spend for this year, we'll encumber probably by mid-September. Does anyone have any questions about the first two financial reports? I think the next on the agenda is the two payrolls for June and July, so I think we have a motion to accept the payrolls. The first payroll report, as you'll see, in June, we have our two normal payrolls, but we also have the five teacher payrolls. So, their salaries are prorated over 26 checks, so they'll get in June their checks to cover for the two months of the summer. So, that's why there's more payrolls in June. And then for the two payrolls in July are much less, because it's only the non-reps and the staff that work year-round are paid in July.
Okay. Move that the School Committee approve payroll warrants for June fiscal year '21, number 50, number 51A, number 51B, 51C, 51D, 51E, and number 52, and payroll warrants for July fiscal year '21, number 2 and 4, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? We've got a five to zero vote again. All right. So, now we're on to transfers.
So, to finalize fiscal '21, at the end of every fiscal year, what we like to do is reconcile all the accounts of the local budget. So, you'll see certain lines went way over due to COVID, due to changes in things that we had to purchase during the year, due to remote teaching. So, we had to have lines go over the available budgets. So, what we do at the end of the year is we reconcile between the lines that were under budget with the lines that went over. So, as you'll see, the number this year is about $2 million worth of transfers, which we talked about at Subcommittee, which is, it's a large number. But due to the year like no other, which somebody has quoted a couple of times, we had to really move money into instructional salaries due to remote teaching. We really had to move building maintenance. We had to buy PPE and special ed tuitions. We had to move money into that line as well. So, we're asking you to move the $2 million. It's within the budget, so it doesn't affect the bottom line. It's just to reconcile the accounts with the town. Do we have a, we don't, do we vote on the?
Yeah. Move that the School Committee approve fiscal year-end 2021 budget transfer request, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I just have a quick question. I just want to talk about the two biggest ones. It looks like from the professional salaries, that would be teacher salaries, and then the two seems like a lot of that contract services. Would that be like, could you give an example? I mean, I think I have some examples, but I'm just curious, did we not staff and we just use contractors instead of?
No. What we did was, professional salaries are all people on the payroll, so it's not just teachers. It's everyone on Wakefield Public Schools payroll. But what we did was, we moved the 11 remote teachers to a contracted services line. They are, in fact, employees of Wakefield, but because we had to submit that for reimbursement, we thought we would isolate it. So, that's why that, the professional salaries line looked like it was underspent by a million, but it was actually overspent in contracted services. But we just did that for accounting purposes and how to get reimbursed from the town.
Okay.
And part of that also is, we were reimbursed for the remote teachers' salaries from FEMA and the CARES Act, so that's why we had that money to move.
So, with the FEMA and the CARES Act, were those separate cost centers, or you just submitted those?
It was just from, it's like the org and the objects in our financial system, so that we had to isolate them to the accounts, so that we could submit them for the auditors and for the FEMA reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to be a pain, Christine, and just ask you to speak.
That's fine.
To every line item on here.
Sure.
On the transfers. I'd just like to get it, because I'm not sure if people can see this, right? I know that they can get it, but I'd just like to talk through each one of them.
You want to talk about the lines that went over budget?
Over, and then why the other ones are under.
Sure.
Is that fair?
So, just to be fair, like, when we set a budget, not every line is going to be perfectly white-doubled.
Of course, of course. And you don't have to talk about substitutes coming in at 7,000 under, right?
Right.
So, okay, so maybe we talk about everything that's over $100,000.
I think we should talk, and I think it's more important to talk about the lines that went over and why.
Okay.
Particularly the large numbers. Custodial personnel services, for obvious reasons due to COVID. They had to come in on Saturdays. We had to do deep cleaning, which maybe we can have Bob and Tim talk about, but just about the schedules that they had to do in order to fulfill the hybrid schedule and the deep cleaning. Overtime was much higher than we anticipated.
Okay.
We also had extracurricular personnel services. That was due to Wakefield Academy. Wakefield Academy had to incur costs that they didn't necessarily budget for a year ago. They had to have busing. They had less staff paying. They were restricted to 80 students. Normally, they have a lot more than that. Staff development was professional development. We had to really up what we were doing district-wide due to the change in schedules and the remote learning, what that was going to mean for our staff. Special education, out-of-district tuitions, and we were also hoping to prepay for next year's salaries.
Got it.
Which we can only do for three months. Contracted services is what I was just speaking about, the remote teaching staff. Textbooks, we had to, we did the adoption, and we had to buy more materials this year. Library books and publications, we just went over budget on that line.
Instructional supplies, Christine, you skipped over that one.
The big one, 436. We put all the PPE in that line, masks, shields, Plexiglas, because again, in order to identify that for the auditors, it was easier just to isolate it to that line.
And then can you just talk about?
The lines that didn't go over?
Yeah, and you don't have to talk about all of them, but I think that some of them are obvious. But the transportation, the fact that busing came under, is that because we were busing less kids?
We didn't bus the high school. We didn't bus athletics.
Got it.
We didn't bus performing arts.
Athletics, yeah, athletics, yep. Okay.
And those are big chunks.
I was going to say, those are, right, those are big dollars, right?
So.
Okay. And then utilities makes sense, because we weren't in the building sometimes.
As much. Definitely not over the weekends, where normally we're renting out.
The space.
The space. And again, aides and professional salaries, because not, we were reimbursed from FEMA for some of those lines. But substitutes, we didn't have as many substitutes. We didn't have as many day-to-day subs. And just vehicle fuel and heating fuel was a little bit less, because we weren't in five days a week for the whole year.
So, if we can get the FEMA money, would the first two lines likely have been close to budget?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. But let's keep in mind FEMA and the CARES money allowed us to do the things that we needed to do this year.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous vote, five to zero? Okay. I think you've got one more?
Yep.
The gift?
The gift. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My computer just went off. The gift, so we just received a gift for the assistant pole vault coach for $500. I think we have a motion?
I do. Move that the School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of $500 from Wakefield Track Boosters Club, a stipend for the assistant pole vault coach for the 2020-2021 indoor-outdoor season.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So, we've got a five-zero vote on that one. Christine, anything else? I think you don't have anything else on the agenda. I just want to make sure.
Nope. I know, there's a lot. Normally, there's only one financial report a month.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, it is, I'm going to give a quick update on the retreat that we had that happened on the 31st of July. I have some notes, and I'm actually going to read them, because I want to make sure that I touch on kind of all of the important points. So, first of all, I want to give an update on the retreat that happened on the 31st. Each of the three years that I've been on the committee, we've held a retreat facilitated by our local MASC, which stands for Mass Association of School Committees. Our local representative, Dorothy Presser. The goal of the meeting is to review processes and procedures for all our members, but with a focus on new members. It's an opportunity for all of the members to understand our work, how it's governed by the Massachusetts general law. We ask questions. We talk about how things work today, and whether we want to change anything, and how our committee works specifically. With that in mind, we held our retreat on Saturday, the 31st, and spent five hours talking about a bunch of different topics. We met at the Galvin, as we have in the past. We use the larger project room, as we often do, small group discussions during these meetings, and little kind of breakouts, where we just talk two or three people at a time. And those rooms allow for kind of easy movement of desks and chairs. We met on the third floor in an area of the school that had yet to be cleaned, as we didn't want to disturb any of the rooms that were already ready for the start of school. We talked about a number of topics. First, we talked about communication, what we're doing well, where we need to spend some more time. Dorothy gave us some guidance on how the committee operates as a whole, and therefore should communicate as a group, but also how we're able to communicate as individual members. We then reviewed our operating norms, which were developed by the committee previously. This is a document that we review every year with each new group of committee members to ensure that all the members understand how the committee has agreed to operate. We spent some time talking about the committee as employers for the staff of the district, and what kinds of relationships we should have with teachers and staff. We talked about how the Wakefield Education Association, otherwise known as the WEA, is the committee's main way of getting feedback from staff. And we discussed the difference between communicating with individual staff members about our children, who are students in Wakefield, and communicating with staff regarding committee matters. Then we spent some time reviewing the resolution related to the logo that was voted on prior to the new committee members joining. The goal was to make sure that all new members were aware of what had been agreed to in the resolution, and talk through any questions. Dorothy confirmed that a resolution is the same as a policy. We discussed how a member could bring forward a request to review the resolution by coming to a full meeting to request that the policy Subcommittee review specific language or parts of that resolution. We spent a short amount of time talking about the plan to put a working group together at the start of the school year to develop a new logo, and reviewed a couple of tactical items that needed to be figured out, like what graphic will be used for new uniforms that need to be replaced. Dorothy shared with the group a quick overview of critical race theory and how it relates to education. We discussed as a group how CRT is not being taught in Wakefield Public Schools, but what is being taught is the value of diversity, equity, and inclusion, an effort that has been going on for a number of years. Lastly, we had a short conversation about district goals and objectives. Dorothy shared how the process of setting goals relates to the superintendent's evaluation process, a process developed by the MASC and one that the School Committee plans to go through this spring. Doug and Kara ran the committee through their initial thinking on goals and objectives. Because we ran out of time on the agenda item, the plan is to meet to further discuss this in a workshop-like format in mid-September. Throughout the meeting, we talked about what falls under the purview of the committee and what doesn't. Dorothy provided clarity for many very specific questions that committee members had about what we're responsible for and what we're not responsible for. Finally, as Chair, I want to acknowledge the way that the School Committee retreat on the 31st was handled as it relates to public access. The retreat was posted as a public meeting, as intended. That said, we did not fully follow the requirements of our town bylaws to ensure easy access to the public. Our town bylaws require additional information be included on our public postings and notices displayed on locked building doors with instructions on how members of the public can gain access. As Chair, I apologize that this is not what happened. My goal is to make our meetings as accessible as possible for anyone who wants to attend those meetings. In the future, while most meetings will be here at WCAT, for any meetings not broadcast here, I will ensure the location and details of how to access the meeting are made available. I would ask that my fellow committee mates, committee members, take note of this requirement and remind me and all future Chairs of our responsibility when it comes to making all of our meetings accessible to the public. That's my update. I know that was a lot. We covered a lot. We were in that room for five-plus hours and did a lot of good work. So, I just wanted to give a quick update on that. I think that's it from me, so Doug, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be back. It seems like we've been gone for some time. I'd like to just start off by making a comment and just expressing our deepest condolences to the Baird family and the passing of Dick Baird on July 21st. I had the good fortune to meet with Mr. Baird back in February, and I found him to be a really remarkable man, very generous with his time. In our first phone conversation, I spoke with him in the evening, and he said, "I can't really hear you too well. Why don't you just come over?" And it was seven o'clock at night, and I thought, "Well, there's COVID going on." Didn't, you know, quite know how to take that, but he asked if we could get together and went over and spent some time in his workshop and learned we have a lot in common. You know, he worked at Raytheon for many years. My dad also worked at Raytheon for many years and knew of Dick Baird, and so, you know, he's really an exceptional person, and I was just struck by his kindness and how dignified he was. I was also struck by all of the things he was working on in his shop. You know, he was fixing something, making something for someone else, he had two or three projects going at once. But just a really remarkable man, who just has just spent a remarkable life sharing of himself with the community, and so we're grateful to have known him, and our deepest condolences to the Baird family. So, I'd like to just say that to start my comments.
Okay, jump in, Doug. So, I met Dick back in 1982, when I was a co-op student, and I worked at Raytheon. I was on the finance side. He was a senior manufacturing engineer, very highly regarded there. If you've met Dick, he knows so much about so many things. Very kind, always took the time to sit down with this college kid that didn't know a widget from anything in that regard, too. And when I left after I graduated, he gave me one of the most thoughtful gifts I've ever received, and it was, I was very touched, because I figured, "Well, who am I in that regard?" Fast forward to '93, I moved to Wakefield. Who do I run into but Dick Baird? And, you know, just involved in everything. Anyone who knew Dick knew he was involved everywhere, did whatever he could to give it his time. And then as Doug spoke, we went, we had the fortune of getting to see him in February and getting the tour, as I'll call it, which I'm sure some of you have had. It's quite a tour, starting with a workshop, going into his office, going into the Indian Room, as he affectionately referred to it as well. So, just a real kind, gentle, good person. So, at his wake, I showed up late, and it was quiet at that point in time, and I was talking to one of his daughters. I said, "You know, your father had a lot of impact on a lot of different people, and I'm one of them. I just want to thank you for sharing some of your father's time with me, because he made a great impression on me, too."
Yeah.
Amy?
I had the opportunity to work with Dick on the zoning board for about five years, and he's somebody I had known from before, just from being around the town, and always with this hat on and this constable sticker. My grandfather was a constable along with him, so they knew each other. You know, he was just a funny guy. He always had a laser pointer at our meetings and would be pointing to things. We would give him a hard time about it. His woodworking was impeccable. Like you said, a gentle giant, you know, six-four, I think, or however tall he was, and just the kindest guy. He always had a joke and would make us laugh, and he'll be deeply missed, so my condolences to the family as well.
He will be deeply missed. He will be deeply missed. So, thank you for those additional words. Just kind of moving down my comments, I'd just like to add to the comments that Christine was making about finance. So, you know, we are, I just want to update the committee. We are working on our grants, right? And so, we have our Title 1, 2, 3, 4, they're entitlement grants, and so each one has a different purpose, but we'll be giving an update on that. We're also actively seeking as many kind of grants to do specialized work as possible. And so, I will tell you, so the, our Director of Technology is currently applying for an emergency connectivity grant through the state, which will help us with wireless access for students and families that might need that as we move into the fall here. So, that's, we're particularly pleased about that, and as we successfully receive grants, we will, of course, update the committee on that, and we will also let you know what we are applying for and why. Right? I think that that's really important to know. I want to share with the committee and the public, last week, August 3, we met as a group, and so there were three members from the town. Town Administrator Steve Mayo, myself, and Amy Walsh joined members, joined 10 members of the MSBA to review 10 design and architectural proposals for the new design and/or addition renovation to Wakefield Memorial High School. And so, this is not part of the permanent building committee or the building committee that will work through the construction process. This is a design selection process, where only a few members from our committee kind of participate, with 10 members from MSBA. It was very educational. I think we learned, you know, we got together and reviewed all of the proposals, and interestingly, we did it independently of one another, and we came up with the same groups. So, I felt like we were really in a good space. We also kind of did a lot of research locally with other communities that have used some of the same designers as well. And so, we started with 10. All of the committee members got to vote, and then there's a score sheet, and then we moved forward, the three highest-scoring design firms. And so, those firms, in no particular order, are SMMA, Finegold, which is working in collaboration with Doran Whittier. I know it was in the newspaper as Finegold, but Finegold is partnering with Doran Whittier, and I make that distinction, because Doran Whittier did our pre-feasibility work in 2016 and then updated the financials as part of that plan in 2019, when we submitted our statement of interest to MSBA. And so, the third, the third firm that was moved forward was Arrow Street. So, these three firms will move to kind of the next round of interviews as finalists, and we will be part of that group again on August 17. We will be meeting via Zoom again, and we have kind of set questions that we will ask each firm, and based on their responses and our deliberation, we will then select or make a recommendation for one of these firms to move forward. So, we feel very fortunate. I think, I think we believe all three firms are really exceptional. And one of the things that was most encouraging to me is that, you know, when we did it, kind of the blind choosing, we were all pretty much in the same space, which made me feel pretty good about kind of what our priorities are and where we were going with this. So, very pleased about that. So, that's it for my comments. I'd like to just start and shift and shift. I'd like to just start and shift and just talk about our reopening plan. But before I do, I'd like to just talk a little bit about kind of our goal in kind of crafting our reopening plan. Our goal is to safely bring students back and keep in-person learning going as long as we possibly can. Right? And so we are still not out of kind of the reach of COVID. So, and this is significant, right? And so I know we're in a number of conversations in a number of different places about, you know, pro-vax, anti-vax, pro-mask, anti-mask, you know, and so I don't know if that is quite the right space that we need to be in. I think we need to start off by understanding that this is still a very serious space to be in. For some people, it's a life-threatening space, right? We can't get too far from that. I also want to be clear about, you know, the plans that we're putting together. They will be comprehensive and we will review all of the aspects of safety and mitigation that we had in place last fall, okay? We are trying to also create newer, updated schedules that feel a little bit more like pre-COVID schedules and not like COVID, like we ended the school year, right? It is a possibility and some districts are returning to school as they have ended in modified schedules, where kids not moving around. And so we're not quite there yet. And so we are taking a more, I think, pragmatic approach. We're optimistic, but we also want to be very cautious and we want to let data kind of drive this conversation and we need to just kind of hear the voices of all stakeholders. A lot of the questions that people are asking around masks, for example. You know, please, we've gotten kind of an equal number of email that has said, you know, "Please have students wear masks" and then "Please don't have students wear masks" as kind of the other end of the spectrum. And so I would urge people not to look at this as a binary, like, you know, when I say binary, binary is ones and zeros, or a yes and a no. So we're gonna have students in every grade, in every class, that are going to need to be masked, right? That are gonna have some health issue where the masks, they're gonna need to wear masks, but they're also gonna need others to wear masks as well so that they don't spread the virus as well. So there'll be more information forthcoming on this. I know the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow evening. We are convening a group Friday morning. I'll be meeting with the town administrator, Steve Mayo, Tom Walsh, Elaine Silver from the Board of Health, our nurses from the school side, Mary Doherty and Kelly Quahley will also be joining us. And so we're gonna kind of debrief on Friday morning just kind of the week in Wakefield and COVID data. We're gonna look at kind of where we are there. So that's an important piece. So in regard to processing communication, one of the things that I want to be a little bit more vigilant about is reporting timelines and when we're gonna be making decisions and reporting. And so tomorrow night, I had shared that the Board of Health is meeting. Tomorrow day, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is hosting a webinar on a new testing model that we are very interested in. It's called Test and Stay. And so we don't have all the information, but what it is is point-of-contact testing. If there are students that are in school that are presenting as symptomatic, there's, in this new model, what we do is we might have the opportunity to test a student with a rapid test and then get those results in a quick amount of time and then if a student tests negative, to get them back to class. What is still not, has not been kind of specified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is information on social distancing and quarantining. I know that there are questions about that and so there'll be more information forthcoming on that. And so in regard to our timeline and reporting to the community, so we do know that we're gonna have to work collaboratively with all of our stakeholders. We're gonna have to hear from the Board of Health, our local nurses, and also kind of be watching in the Middlesex League, in the Middlesex County in terms of what the COVID data looks like. But we will be convening our, so Friday morning, we meet as a leadership group and then next week on 8/17, we meet as a policy and communication group where we will be updating, I will be making a recommendation of policy and communication based on our collaboration with other stakeholders, including our Board of Health, how we might update our policies, right? Especially our face-covering policy. So that will happen on 8/17 and then our comprehensive plan will come back to this committee on 8/24 with my recommendations and the school committee will be able to weigh in with questions and then vote. And then we'll go from there, alright? So on 8/25, we will be putting forth kind of a comprehensive plan to return to school. So that's our, that's our plan right now. So just in regard to an update around kind of our mitigation, our safety and mitigation strategies, we know that kind of vaccination is the leading strategy to help us eradicate COVID. We do know with this new breakthrough variant, it's creating kind of different ripples for people. It's creating some challenges. We are watching schools internationally and we're watching schools across the country and some of the strategies that they're taking and we're learning from both groups, maybe what are some, what are some good moves to make and what might not be the best strategy. And so in regard to vaccinations, we know that there are students and families that are able to participate in vaccination and some that cannot. And we need to be respectful of that and meet people where they are. In terms of mask-wearing, we do know, like vaccinations, you know, it's likely that we're gonna have some type of mask-guidance that's gonna mandate masks. And so the question is where, when, how much, we are working through that and we'll have more information about that. We are starting our Acceleration Academy for incoming kindergarten students on the 16th, Kara?
Yep.
Do you want to say a little bit about that?
Well, you finish and then I'll add it to you.
Alright. So we want, so our Acceleration Academy, we're really excited about. We feel like this is, this is two weeks that we are dedicating to our, there's gonna be some eighth grade and 10th grade students receiving some math, you know, early work for acceleration. But the majority of that grant that we receive from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed will go to Acceleration Academies for our incoming kindergarten students. We're super excited about this. This is, this is kind of a nice opportunity for us. It's like a soft opening for our K students. They're gonna be working by, working by and large with their K teachers. Not all of them will be in their home schools, but the majority will be. This might be a program that we're gonna work to continue as we move on. We might have to think how creatively, how we're gonna finance it, but I think the outcome, I think we're anticipating the outcome is gonna be so significant that we're gonna be looking to continue this. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask students in the kindergarten program to bring masks with them, right? And to participate in mask-wearing outside of the policy that we're creating. And there's, the reason for that is because if we do come back with a mask mandate that includes kindergarteners, we want them to be acclimated and prepared to be with their peers and to participate in their class with a mask. It's really that simple. And we know that there are going to be exceptions, just like in our face-covering policy. We know that there are kind of exceptions that we need to make in regard to medical exceptions or behavioral exceptions or even religious exemptions, right? And so we will kind of work with families on a case-by-case basis on that. But more information to follow there. Do you want to say something?
No, I think, I think you covered it, yeah.
Good. And so, so just to also let people know, I did share that, you know, physical and social distancing, the information that we got initially will be updated. We are gonna be continuing with hand hygiene. We are gonna continue to work very closely with parents to keep students home if they're symptomatic. That was really kind of a windfall for us last year. We think, and it's hard for us adults because pre-COVID, I think, you know, wasn't uncommon for a student to have a cold and attend school. And it wasn't uncommon for adults to be a little ill and attend work. I think we're gonna need to take a more conservative tack there. In regard to transportation, we're going back to normal transportation schedules, which is great. And so the masks are mandated. It's a federal public health order. So this is not subject to our plan. We're just ordered that all students, by federal, by a federal health order, all students riding the bus will need to wear masks and that includes adults. And so we're looking very closely, after we kind of get our plan drafted and worked on, we are working very closely with the superintendents in the Middlesex League and we will be working with our athletic directors as well and our director of final performing arts, Tom Banker, to figure out any moves that we need to make to their programs to keep everyone moving forward. And I think we would just encourage, this is an ask, an early ask, and so we would encourage families, if you have questions, please be in touch. Do not hesitate to reach out to your principals and your classroom teachers. I don't know that they're available just yet. But, you know, I would start with your child's administrator. If you have any questions, you certainly can reach out to any one of us as well. So that's where we're at with our kind of update with opening. Michael?
Question, Jack?
Yeah.
What's the assumption we're making now as far as the setup of schools? Are we setting up our schools like it was pre-COVID right now? Or are we doing every three feet? Or I assume we're not doing every six feet, but...
So we're setting up our schools, we know that we're gonna need kind of our quarantine space, like our nurses have an additional space. We know that we're gonna need to maintain those spaces and keep those open in the event that we do testing or are able to test in that area and if, in the event, someone's positive. So we do know that those spaces are gonna need to be open. We are not moving everything back into classes. We're moving what we can back into classes. At the elementary, in the early elementary levels, we're keeping desks in classes and we're hopeful that the guidance around social distancing, if students are masked, that we will maintain a social distance of three feet whenever possible, right? And if we can be closer, we will, right? We ideally would love for students to be closer. You know, I know the K teachers are really interested in clustering their desks to make little, little groups to have students be, be close to one another.
But no tables at this point?
But no tables at this point. And we're not yet there on the rugs either. So the other question that is kind of a leading question with elementary is, you know, "I have my rug at my house. It's been cleaned three times. Can I bring it in? Can I put it down?" And so we're saying that, you know, just no, not yet. And so we do want to get as much and have it be as much like it was pre-COVID as we possibly can. But thank you for your question. Yeah?
Do you, has there been any, and if so, how many cases have happened during summer school?
So I shared last week with, with parents, the same question has come up, which leads to a corollary around masks. I feel like you know the answer to the question, right? And so we've had, we've had, I think, I believe, no cases of transmission of COVID in our summer programming. So, and I think the corollary to that is, well, if we've had no cases, why might we be thinking about masking? And the short answer is, with a small population. So anytime that there are changes in the calendar that kind of, where there are kind of massive shifts in populations of kids. So we're going from a small controlled group, you know, of three to 500 students with a group of parents. Not all of them are unmasked. Some are masked. But we're going from a controlled, closed group to now 3,500 students moving about at three different levels, elementary, middle, high, interacting in a number of different ways. And so, and we also have up to 600 employees kind of coming back as well. So with the massive shift in populations, I think we're thinking that the guidance likely will be to have people masked to keep people safe.
And just to play devil's advocate on that, you're saying that it's a small group that's in the school?
Yeah.
I think more people have been going back to work, so parents have been back at work. Older siblings maybe are at work or at sports or school. So there still is that kind of outlier that people are still mixing around with other people?
I still think in September, it's different than August. In September, I mean, and we're also seeing now, Amy, kind of an uptick in local businesses that are now requiring masks. We're seeing CVS now mandating masks. We're seeing, you know, LL Bean mandating masks, you know? And so, so we're seeing an uptick and we're also seeing an uptick in private industry in Boston, our commercial spaces, where people were really aggressive about, you know, "September, we're coming back to work." And the new correspondence looks like, "October, we're coming back to work." So I think with the breakthrough variants, I think people are really concerned that things could get very bad very fast. And so I think people are just moving at a rate where they feel they can be really safe.
And then one more question. Do you know how many people currently in Wakefield have COVID?
Have, right now?
Yeah.
I believe that there, I believe that the number that Steve Mayo quoted was 14 new cases.
14 new, and then do you know the total number?
I don't, but we'll have an update on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Friday.
We'll have an update on Friday. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're certainly welcome.
I have a couple of questions.
Of course.
So we talk about a closed, you know, and controlled group and that, that's the literacy, the kindergarten literacy that we're holding. I just am confused why we're not using the same summer rules. I mean, you say to get the kids used, is that what the reason is, to get the kids used to it? Because the research I did today is kids coming from preschools who did not mandate masks. So I just am confused why we switched quickly. Like, summer school's just ending this, this Friday and then we're going right to literacy. I just thought it'd be nice to give parents a choice during the summer and kids can actually meet their peers with their whole face.
Yeah. When they're outside, they will be able to meet them with their whole face. But when they're inside in kind of closed spaces, Amy, I think we're feeling like it's, we'd like to keep them masked just as a starting point because if we're gonna acclimate them to what it might be their classroom practice, we would like to give them the best opportunity to practice what we might ask them to do.
If I can just add, we met, we've been meeting to plan with the teachers and staff as well and this was something that, you know, was posed to the group. Like, nothing's set in stone right now. There's no policy that's been made. There's no mandate, but it's looking like it's going in this direction, you know? Developmentally, what do we feel like we need to do as a group? And I think it was that mindset, like Doug said, you know, with this age group, you know, they want to know what to expect. They want to have consistency. So we're trying to kind of just go the route of keeping things the same as we can most predict them to be in the fall. And we are realizing, you know, the incoming kindergartners this year are going to be dramatically different from years past. There's some who haven't been to preschool or had very limited preschool or were homeschooled and didn't have to wear a mask all last year, whereas most of our kids are used to that mask-wearing. Again, like Doug said earlier, it's a little bit of a soft opening where, you know, we've talked to parents and said, "Listen, this is a week where we can work with you" and, you know, if there is a really big struggle with the mask-wearing, we're gonna be sensitive and developmentally appropriate and, you know, caring with the students. But, you know, it'll be good to know, you know, if it was a real struggle for that week. So that was kind of, you know, when we weighed the pros and cons, we felt just to keep things as consistent as possible and the way, you know, I think we're all watching day-to-day where we think this is going for the fall. And, you know, it just felt like, it just felt like the right thing to do. And with the understanding, because I hear you also, you know, these are new kids, new environment, new peers, we're gonna try to have a lot of outdoor time, you know, break up the day. We've talked a lot about, you know, incorporating play-based learning into the day and keeping it fun and engaging. So there will be those social opportunities because those have been lacking as well for this incoming kindergarten group. So the play skills, social skills are, you know, we call it a literacy academy, but I think I mentioned this in a couple of other meetings, too. It's just, it's gonna be that, that social piece of the week that is going to, you know, we're hoping will increase the readiness to learn.
I don't even know the hours. Is it 9:00 to 12:30?
8:30 to 12:30, Monday through Friday.
So four?
So five days a week, yeah. So it's five days, four hours and no lunch, but we'll build in snack and outside play and breaks.
Amy, I also want to, I also don't want to miss an opportunity, Amy, to share that they're going to be, you know, keeping students safe. There are gonna be peers in classes that are gonna need other students to be masked, right? And so if we're, and if there is a student that may need an exemption, we need to work with those families on a case-by-case.
I understand that, but it's just so, my, we have kids and we didn't do that for summer school. So I just, what's which?
I think this decision isn't necessarily related to data or something. You know, because, because you're right, like, we did not have, we... You know, because, because you're right, like we did not have, we've talked about this a lot. The summer program with masks lifted has been overall very successful. Give or take a couple of summer colds.
But our K students coming in, many of them have not been back to school at all.
It was more about preparing them for.
So they were not part of the summer program?
The potential rules. Right, yeah, no, it was, it was, the decision was more around practicing norms of what September will likely be as opposed to COVID cases spiking. And, you know, we're making this decision because we're, you know, worried next week about things. It was more about if this is the way it's going for the fall, you know, is it best to prepare them? And just get them used to the, the kind of more like the behavioral norm of wearing, of mask wearing. That was really the, the mindset.
And then we, we planned for opening, is it, are we planning all levels all the same? Like it's going to be one standard policy for all Wakefield public schools? Or would we look at individual levels? Like the pre-K program is one, the elementary, middle, high?
I think, I think we always look at each level.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're going to be working with, you know, our board of health and, and kind of taking feedback and also looking at our data to make, to make the best decision we can. We also will be working with our, our faculty and staff that, that are an important factor here as well. We'll, we'll be meeting with our, the Wakefield Education Association leaders to talk with them about opening. Because with this kind of resurgence of COVID, it kind of raises all of the mitigation strategies as well as all the other things that we did last year. You know, their questions are what's in play, what's not? You know, you know, questions that are coming quick. Like, you know, you know, a parent sent me a note and said, you know, if there's a spike in the variant, would you close a classroom? The same answer that we gave last year is the same answer that I will give this year. If there's a spike and it creates an unsafe situation in the class and we cannot effectively contact trace and, and quarantine, then we could close a classroom, we could close a grade, we could close a school. And so those are kind of the working theories that we're kind of backed to, which we knew that we needed to make those decisions to keep students safe. So.
Doug, if I can just, I talked to Doug about this a little bit before the meeting. I think it, it, more important than how we start off the year is what sort of metrics we use to decide, do we progress or do we go back? You know, if cases spike, how do, what, what tells us? What's that metric that says we need to go back? Or what metric says we're doing great, let's move forward? Because it's, it's a starting off point. And we all know that could go either way really. So I think we just have to do our best to come up with metrics that allow, to guide us in making those decisions. Rather than leave it somewhat subjective, I guess, in some way. And I know it's not all objective, but I think it's important that we develop a framework that allows us to move forward or backward as necessary.
Are we going to have that flexibility?
And with our plan, yeah, I believe we will need to, Amy.
No, I mean, there's not going to be somebody that comes in and says, this is what it is. And then we don't, our hands are tied.
So I'm not, I'm not following you.
So say in Mike's instance, you know, they sat out with masks on and then there's no cases, the town's doing great, the school's doing great, everything.
Yeah.
And that meets our metrics, but somebody else is still saying, you know, the governor's saying everybody still has to wear a mask.
Yeah.
We don't have that control anymore, right?
If the governor says everyone's wearing masks, then everyone's wearing masks. So, you know, right, right now, what they've done is they've provided what I would argue is soft guidance. You know, when they say strongly recommend, doesn't mean required.
Right.
And when then they say it's, it's a local decision, those, that local decision falls to board of health first, school committee second. For towns and districts that don't have a board of health, it falls to the policy of the school committee. So, and, and usually that comes, you know, through the policy and communications subcommittee for us. And there would be a recommendation made beyond whatever is policy in regard to other factors or parts of the plan, similar to what we've had in the past. Right? So, but there needs to be kind of a revisiting of all parts of our plan. You know, which include, you know, if we need to shift or close, that might mean that we, remote instruction might be back on the table. You know, what does that look like? You know, how might we, you know, what, how do we provide that? Right? And so I just want to be clear that closing a school because of a spike in COVID is different than kind of the remote virtual school that we had last year. Because right now, the, the state has said that that is not an option for students and families. So, just to be clear. So.
Doug, related to, sorry, Stephen, it's because it's related to that. We haven't been given any guidance from D E S I around remote teaching.
No. Oh, we have, it's.
That it's not?
Not on the table.
Okay. And I ask that only because if the state, if D E S I is strongly recommending masks for, what is their, what is their recommendation? Is it K through 12 or pre-K through 12?
The state guidance from Mass D P H and, and the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is students aged two through 12 be masked.
Okay. So that's their, okay, so that's their recommendation. So what I worry about is if we, if they're not giving, if they're saying no remote learning and their guidance is K, pre-K through 12, age 12 needs to be, or two through 12 needs to be masked. And we don't do that. And then we find ourselves in a situation where we need to move to remote learning, but we can't because they have not approved it. Has there been any discussion about that?
So they, so let's, let me just be clear about, so the, the state, if we need to shift and close a classroom or close a school for, for COVID-related reasons, we simply contact the Department of Ed and they kind of review our case numbers with us. And it's usually no, no questions. They, they are, they are and have been 100% supportive when districts have needed to make those moves.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarity.
You're certainly welcome.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I was just going to say to the, to the idea of sort of to Amy's point about what's changed. I think from an angle from the private sector, knowing that, like at least within the last three weeks, I've seen private sector plans change four different ways on, on when reentry was going to happen or whether masking for vaccinated, unvaccinated. I appreciate that level of fluctuation that you're seeing sort of in all levels of, of government and, and in the private sector and families. So I just, I'd like to, to as quickly as we can sort of find what works for us and what, and that's what I'm anxious for is sort of in policy and comms is to, is to draw that line. Because I think families need that, need that, that assurance and that sort of foundation. So that, you know, there is a level of fluctuation that happens out there and, and watching the news, whatever it is. But let's just find what our, our level set is and communicate that out so that people know what to expect, you know, as soon as possible. And it feels like that's, that's what we're trying to do. And I'm feeling really appreciative of the lessons that were learned last year. As you talk about sort of how are we going to be able to move between sort of modalities? You know, whether it's remote or, and I think that, I think our bench was deepened through what happened last year. And I think we'll be ready for it. So tents, outside space. I just, one of my kids asked me today as we were going to the Galvin, like, where's, where's the tent? I'm like, well.
Bob Chirrelli has them all.
I'm like, I don't know, it could be because it's summer. Like they don't, they don't necessarily need the classes. But as you were talking about sort of having more outside time and stuff, is, is there any talk about, are, are we talking about having some of those back or?
We have not gotten to our tent conversation yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did they take them all?
They took them all. So we rented them, right? And so you have to give them back. And so, yeah, so.
You could buy them and then rent them out for weddings.
Could do that.
Okay.
No source income for the school system.
Yeah, that'd be, I, that might be a nice story in the item.
Is that a conversation that, that you think is going to happen?
I, I think as we develop our plan and as we are hearing from all of our stakeholders, including our administrators, I'm sure that will be part of our conversation. Everything that we've done in the past is part of the conversation. So when I say everything that we've done, you know, things that we even didn't participate in, that we're, we're discussing it again, just to review, are we doing everything we can do to meet our goal? Our goal is to keep in-person teaching and learning happening safely for as long as we can. That's our goal. Right? That's our goal. We also need to really be on the same page and acknowledge with an abundance of caution that COVID is, is, we're still not quite out of the woods yet with this. Right? And so that's just a critical, critical piece. And, and there are, there's kind of a range of needs. And as a school committee and as a leadership group for the, for the schools, you know, we need to try to, you know, meet the needs of all comers. So it's a really important thing.
I think, you know, COVID isn't going to go away. In December, it's not going to go away next June, it's not going to go away the following December. It's always going to be there. At some point in time, we're going to, for lack of a better term, take an acceptable risk and go with a certain format. So we're, you know, if we wait for it to be 100% gone, we'll never have the kids in school. So that's what we have to think about longer term, not right now.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think we agree. And your points, Michael, earlier about an on-ramp and an off-ramp. So this is where we're starting. What might be the indicators that might help us go back? Right? Or start to kind of get out of the, some of the strategies that we've put in place. And those are things that in the past, we've looked at COVID data. We've worked very closely with our board of health. We've looked at the state database and looked at the transmission of the virus. That is our first stop. Like that is something that we did every single day. Right? And so every single day, we did that at every school. We touch base, our nurses were also an instrumental part at doing contact tracing to help create plans and keep kids in school and, and out when they needed to be out. And so that's, that's, those, all, all those things are back in play.
And if I can just add that, I just think from a big picture perspect, perspective too. I think we, even with, I know there's still talk about mask wearing or no mask wearing, but even with mask wearing, I think there's still a progression in our re, reentry back to school where, you know, what will happen in the fall, what we're planning for anyways. Like Doug said, we're, we're planning on normal class sizes. We're planning on going back, you know, to more rotations, to, you know, more opportunities for students. We haven't done that yet. And, and so that will be a progression for us from where kids left in the spring, where we were still co-horted, we were still, you know, kind of trying to stay within certain areas of the building. You know, all of the opportunities that kids get in a more normal year weren't available to them. So I think even with masks, we're still, you know, moving in a really positive direction just to add, maybe end the conversation, which is that, that it's still, you know, as long as we keep looking better with every plan for kids, I think, you know, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know it's late in the game, but do you think that there's any chance D E S I would allow remote schooling?
No.
Okay, so even with?
I, I, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Stranger things have happened at the Department of Ed. It's a possibility, but I, I think it's.
People that are really fearful, you know, give them an opportunity.
I think at this late date for districts. So last year, I think that there was just so much concern. I think the Department of Ed was very liberal in their kind of guidance. And they just said, you know, it's, it's parental choice. And then districts had to work underneath that, that expectation. And, you know, I would argue, I think we did it pretty well. You know, but we had essentially like a, we had a virtual school of almost 400 students learning kind of real time outside of school with a virtual staff, with, with virtual administrators. Right? And, and so I, I think for the department to say at this late date, you know, districts need to do that again, I think, I don't know that they're going to say that.
And then just a thought that I was having, if it seems like it's leaning more towards that masks are going to be required, just a, something I, you know, an option maybe is maybe the kids have to wear a mask in the hall, but when they get to their classroom, they can remove it once they're in their seat, just like they would do when they go to lunch. They sit down, they eat, they take their mask off. So that these kids aren't in masks. You know, some kids that might take the bus, they take the bus, you know, seven o'clock in the morning. They're in school all day, they take the bus home. These kids are in a mask a long time. And what are the, what's the long-term effects of that? We don't know yet. So maybe that's something else to consider that, you know, if you're in the hallway and it's a group of people, then put your mask on. When you sit down in your classroom and you're having your lesson, the teachers that way can see who, which kid is talking and that, you know, the kids know which kid is talking and asking a question. So just something else I think to think about that, I mean, for me personally, I think would be more beneficial than putting these kids sitting there, they're, they're separated. You know, once they're in their seat, they're separated. So it just seems it would be a little bit more helpful.
Yeah. No, I think. Go ahead.
Are we baking in more time for, for breaks?
So mask breaks will be if, you know, depending on exactly how the policy lands, mask breaks will, will need to be part of it, just like they were in the past. Yeah. So there'll be breaks, you know, there'll also be opportunities to spend some time outside. There'll be opportunities to eat outside. You know, I mean, there'll be, you know, we want to build as much flexibility and decision-making into the schools as we can. You know, one of the things that Kara said is important. You know, we are hopeful around creating, we're to create a little bit more of a progression back toward the schedules that we had. Right? With, with two specialists a day, you know, with kids participating and, and, you know, in, in the schedules that they had left pre-COVID. So that's part of our plan right now. And so, so all of that is part of it, including there needs to be time for breaks. And so, and one of the things that we've spent a lot of time with is just really thinking about acclimating and bringing students back to class. Right? And so there'll be more information forthcoming from us in regard to how we're going to open school, what the needs of students are, how we're bringing on additional, I spoke earlier about additional positions that we're bringing in in regard to counseling and support. We're hiring additional special education support. So we're, we're really kind of taking a broad look, very thoughtful look at what student needs are before we jump right into teaching and learning. Right? So we need to acclimate students, students and faculty. Right? So faculty have been on modified schedules for 18 months as well. So we need to kind of, we have a responsibility to really be thoughtful about how we do that. And we will, we will. I think, you know, I'll be honest with you, I feel like the Wakefield plan, if you look at surrounding districts or anything, any one or any district in the Middlesex League, our plan being different at every level met the needs of students at each level. And, and so other districts, you know, went with kind of a, you know, because it was easier to manage, right? And so one week on, one week off, everybody. We didn't do that, you know? And so we will continue to try to meet the needs at each level, including Doyle, of course, pre-K, K, K through four, middle and high. So more to follow.
Doug, one other thing was, you may have touched on earlier, if I missed, I'm sorry, is athletics.
Yep.
As well as other extracurricular activities.
Yeah.
We don't really know the answer to that, obviously, as well. I'm just curious if you have, if you mind giving some thoughts.
We don't yet. Right now, we have students that are here for band camp. And we have, you know, athletes will be coming back. And we're kind of, right now, the students that are here for band are outside. And so they're not masked. And so, you know, more to follow on, in both of those areas. You're welcome. Are we good?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your questions. Claudia, I'm so sorry, I was long-winded.
Hi, Claudia.
Okay, hi, everyone.
I'd like to invite.
I'm sorry I couldn't be in person at another commitment project. So I'm happy down in Zoom is working for this.
So Claudia's joining us this evening just to give an update on the Medco program.
Hello, so I wanted to start off saying that I would, I have to say, given the year we've had, the majority of our Medco kids was able to do really well academically. I don't know about, I mean, socially and emotionally, a little hard for some of them. We did see some learning loss in some of our kids, both across the grade level. But I think teachers and staff across the district was very supportive of our students, getting the work done and just trying to work with us in regards to some of the challenges given the, um, the year we've had. So from September to April, we had about 61 students who came to school hy, on the hybrid model. That's about only, so that only left about four or five kids that were on the remote schedule by the time everybody was welcomed back in April to the schedule. So we had a really good turnout for students in general for the school year. And I think senior celebration was much appreciated by the families as the seniors were able, our six seniors were able to gra, participate in activities and enjoy their, the last part of their senior year. We had six seniors graduate, and all six of them are slated to go to higher ed programs, which we're very excited about. I hope to bring them back in the middle of the December break to do like a Q and A with our 10th, 11th and 12th graders, to kind of talk about their experience in their first half of, of being a college student. So we'll, so more to follow in that. So with that said, I'll go into summer, given that we had, some students had some, some learning loss, we, the district did offer both summer school and also in addition a summer warrior program. About, I want to say, 10 of our Metco students from grades K to 5th participate in the summer warrior program. This year, we're able to offer transportation, so the students have been coming to the warrior program since July 6th. It's scheduled to end on Thursday. And we were also able to offer transportation this year, which was a huge appreciation by the, by the parents. The kids loved the program. And then in addition to it, we were able to allow, have students that were participating in summer school or summer recuperating of credit to be transported into the district, also district-wide between high school and middle school. So they can get that service and be promoted and go on to the next grade. So parents were very appreciative of that. In regards to enrollment this year, we were able to enroll 10 new students across grade level. So I have one high schooler coming in, a couple of K to second graders coming in, and a couple of students at the middle school. So we're still fully in the process of finishing up enrollment process, but for the most part, we have 10 new Metco students coming into the district for this year, which will give us a number, a total of 63 Metco students in the district. So we're looking forward to the new families joining us. On August 23rd, I will be hosting a Wakefield, Wakefield Metco Open House Night for our families. I've invited all administration staff. Families will be coming out to meet, to kind of reconnect. Masks, of course, required. It will be at the Gavin Auditorium. The auditorium is big enough space to allow some spacing if, if people want to, while they're wearing their mask. I hope to do, is to reconnect families, because a lot of our things are either remote or, or hybrid. So just to kind of reconnect, meet some of the administration staff, put some faces to some of the names, to names. Because some of our kids that were new last year has never been in the district, so they don't even know really, other than the remote teachers, they don't really know the other teachers that's at their schools and their principals. So we're hoping that would be a great night, and also be an opportunity for parents to see each other and sign off on papers and get stuff going. So we'll be, I'll be keeping, meeting with Doug and Kara to make sure I'm up to date with any new DSC rules, especially around transportation. So transportation doesn't change around requirements, we should be fine. This show is a little complicated in the sense of keeping the numbers down and how many students per seats, making sure we have siblings sitting together. And I have to say, most of our, well, 100% of our students followed the mask rules, they just wore their mask, it wasn't issued. Other than those days, it was 90 plus, which were a little difficult for them to be riding the bus with masks. But overall, we're opening up the school year, everyone's excited to come back in person. We're opening up the school with 63 new Metco, 63 Metco students in the district. We're looking forward to that. We're also looking to try to get, connect families to the, to the Wakefield-Boston Collaboration Program that we're trying to start up at the district in which we would connect Boston Metco families to families in Wakefield in order to facilitate and bridge the gap and to just build a connection. Right now, I have 10 Wakefield families that are interested. We're hoping at the August 23rd meeting, more of our Metco families will sign up in order to start, to start that program and to start the bridging of the gap of the two communities. Questions?
A question, is any limita, you said you have 10 new students? If we had 20, would you have taken 20? Or is there any limitation at all?
I don't know if there's limitations, but I think it's more or less we'll talk about budget-wise, what we're funded for, to the cap. And then also, I can't say that there were enough participants to get, for us to get 20. So I think getting the 10 was a, like I said to Doug, was a hard 10, but we made it work this year. So I think, I think we're always open to increasing the program, of course, with Doug's guidance. But I think enrollment, it has been a little struggle this year, so hopefully we'll be better next year. But I don't think we're closed off to increasing if, if it's appropriate and we can manage it.
Great, thank you.
As a follow-up, Glavia, can you just talk about why you think enrollment is, is difficult? Is that a Wakefield thing? Is that a Metco thing? Like, what, why is enrollment complicated?
Enrollment is difficult in the sense of, I think, families in Boston that typically would use the Metco program as a great educational springboard for their kids. There's also a lot of charter schools in Boston. So I'm seeing, so there's a combination of stuff going on right now. So you either have, families are signing up both for charter and Metco at the same time, so whichever one comes quicker, they'll take that. Or, I have to say, all 10 of my new families, they are all coming from charter schools. And they had a really bad experience during the COVID, during COVID in regards to their, their unhappiness with how either the, the, the educational piece was given out, the communication from their schools. And I remember one parent telling me, they don't even know, they even know the principals of that school for the year. So a lot of my, so the 10 students that have come in are really students that are transitioned from charter schools, and the parent did not have a great experience. So with that said, they've been transitioned to Metco.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks for the clarity there.
You're welcome.
Uh, go ahead, Steve.
Glavia, in terms of the, the 10 families from Wakefield that are interested in hosting, I was just curious, is that a, like a one-for-one family to, to Metco student ratio, or are there some families that might host a couple of siblings, or?
I think based on the paperwork, based on the data, it looks like it can go either or. Some families are more comfortable with, some families are willing to do sibling groups, some parents, some families are only willing to do one student. And then I think also, it also, it also varies on how avail, available those families are. So some families are willing to be host parents, host families, some parents, some families only be able to help with transportation or support kids in other ways. But we welcome all, we welcome all support in ways that can actually support our kids in different ways when they're in the dis, the district.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask a similar question. For families that want to do something like that, I assume can just email you? And can-
Yeah, so they-
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
Although, I was going to say, and ways to support, I know, I, I had reached out originally when you, when the email had first gone out, and unfortunately, at the time, I wasn't able to participate because of the transportation. So is that a main thing for it? Or is there something else that, other support and other ways if people want to assist in that, but can't necessarily do the transportation?
Right. So we're looking for anyone who, if it's not transportation, be a host parent, or if you can, we do have families who have donated to different things that we've been doing for the kids. So we welcome any type of help or support, even if it's for, right now, I think this year will be the first year we'll actually do a face-to-face. So I have invited the family, the 10 families from Wakefield that, in the program, to the open night, on the open house night on the 23rd, just to do a little meet and greet, because I think when we started it during COVID, it was a little difficult on, to be on, on camera, to meet someone you've never really met before. So we're hoping if we do a little bit face-to-face, if any of the families can come out, it'll be a great way to advertise it. But really, we're really looking for anyone who's willing to join us. And then also, when we go back to doing things together as a larger group, also to kind of do some planning around building some commu, some activities and so on that the two communities can do together.
Thank you.
Glavia, I know when, when I was involved in some of the conversations about the creation of that kind of partnership of parents on the Wakefield side with Metco families, one of the things that you had shared was that many of the, the Metco kids felt pretty kind of connected and supported already. Or it's at the high school where it's really about transportation, right? It's around staying after school, and how do they get home? And they need a ride to Grove, or they need a ride actually into the city. And, and it seems like with these 10 new students, I don't know how many families that is, but as they are new to Wakefield, it feels like that's, there, there's a real opportunity to kind of build that connection because they're new to the district, right? And with a lot of the other kids that you were talking about, it felt like they were pretty well ingrained in the community and had friends and, and, and had kind of that support, maybe that, that they, most of them had some supports. So I, I'm looking forward to kind of hearing how those 10 new, new families kind of come in, and if, if that's really your kind of pilot way of getting this kind of off the ground, of being able to pair up families with, you know, Wakefield families with Metco families.
Yeah, so we're hoping to use that as a springboard, but I've also left it very open for parents that if their children at their prospective school was to make a friend, this is a great way to encourage, encourage connection with each other. So there, you know, I encourage them that if they have a, if their student's coming home talking about student A every day, they should, you know, try to facilitate, try to figure out who that student A is and try to connect. So I'm just hoping, one, to take down some barriers or some fears or some hesitation around having the connection in that, in that piece. We also have a parent that I'm hoping if she comes to the meeting, will be able to talk openly about her son's relationship and journey with his host family, because we have one, a 10th grader who, a 11th grader now, who has had the same host family since elementary. And that child spent a significant amount of time in the district with that family, and he's almost, he vacations with them. It may not be the norm, but it's a great example to say that, to show and see that it's possible. If, if we just put a little fear aside, with still being safe with COVID, but still being open to the concept of building that relationship.
Great stuff.
Good stuff, Glavia, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's for Glavia or Doug, but when the elementary students come in, do we have pre-K? Or no, just K through? How is, is there a process of how we decide what elementary school they go to?
There is, there is, based on enrollment.
Yep.
So we look at available seats. And, and then we kind of, Glavia and I get together and we plan. Glavia has a whole color-coded chart, right? We, we don't want, she does, she's chuckling. But we don't want students to be singletons.
Right.
So we want them to have a friend in a school.
Yep.
And so we just kind of go through, what seats do we have available, what does enrollment look like? How can we match students up? And then we go from there in regard to inviting new students. And like Glavia said, she worked really, really hard this year to get 10 students. You know, I think our hope was to get a little bit more than 10, but I don't know that they had complete files at, at the Metco office prepared to share. And I think Glavia took as, as many as she could and kind of completed that work. But we review, we do it kind of like an intake and onboard students and families when they, when they apply. And so we look at their needs, we look at match, we look at what services we have to offer in a building, suit and notes. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I just was, I just giving me a small school, big school and different programs, and I just, again, didn't want any one student to be just singly dropped off at an elementary school. And then you could bridge, like, we know we have this many students at this many elementary, at this elementary school could be like, then you could help get the relationship, like those families, you know, where the Woodville community say, and we have this many students.
Yeah. No, one of, one of the things that we talked about is this notion of, of being a host family. And there's kind of a range of supports that you can provide as a host. I think some parents have this notion of, you know, you know, we have to, you know, have a student over, you know, but there is a range of kind of supports that you can provide if you have a student from Boston in your child's class, and you just want to be a host to be a point of contact. You know, my child's missing a homework assignment, for example. Who do I call? Right? So if, if that family or parent is willing to just be a point of contact, right? Those, those little things make the biggest difference. And, and they're timely, right? There's not, they don't have to wait, they can actually have a relationship and call up and say, you know, Amy, my, my daughter missed the homework, can you please tell me? Because she's at the island melting down, right? And, and, and we support, right? And so, I'm really pleased that we are kind of getting back to this program. And so it's, it's been some time that we've been away from it, yeah. Thank you, Glavia.
Thanks, Glavia.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Much appreciated. We'll see you soon.
Welcome. All right, thanks.
So next, we'd like to invite Tim and, and Bob to the, to the table to talk about their transition work and, and what's happening there.
Good evening, everyone. How you doing? If you all know me, this is, this is Tim O'Brien. Tim is going to be taking over as a facility director for Wakefield Public Schools. So for, so today and over the next, next two weeks, we'll be doing a, a transition. I'll be showing them around the schools. We met most of the custodians today, but, you know, I'll be showing them the schools, kind of the work that, that, I don't want to say I've done, but what we've done, the administrative team in the, in the schools, in collaboration with the town over the past, you know, two and a half years. I think we've made, made some, some really good progress, you know, as, as always, there's always work to be done. But, you know, we'll just keep moving forward. The last, as everyone has, has spoke this evening, the last 12 to 18 months have been really challenging. Right? You know, and, and I think the next, next 12 months are still going to be challenging. On the facility side, we've, we've kind of, you know, put, put the pieces in, in place to help pivot and move forward, and as Doug said, make the schools as safe as possible. So, so students and faculty and staff could come back each day. With, with the, the variance in how COVID is mutating, right? We need to be able to pivot fast on the facility side, and kind of, I think that's where we, that's where we are right now, where we're just kind of in limbo almost. The schools are ready to go. Cleaning is, is where it needs to be. We have a few weeks until school's starting. And really, the, all the work that the custodians have been doing over the summer really comes to light in the last few weeks of school. And, and right now, you might go into school and it might look like it's in disarray, but, you know, it's kind of the home stretch, and the custodians have been doing a, doing a great job. So we're just kind of waiting to see what DSC, the CDC, the local government has to say about, about COVID. And, and, you know, we're going to take the steps and come up with a plan to get students, staff back safely. So that's kind of, kind of the facility side where we are, and going to let, let Tim transition. I don't know if you have anything to say?
Yeah, this is, this is only day two, but I'll continue to follow Bob around and, over the next week or so, and, and try to make the transition as seamless as possible. A lot of information, a lot to learn, but I'm excited and taking a lot of notes. So, thank you, Bob.
So, so Tim is coming to us from the town side. Tim worked at, at DPW. We interviewed five candidates for this position with a range of experiences. This, this position always brings out kind of varied candidates, right? And so, we, we've had some people come to us that have, you know, worked in facilities at, in colleges where they've worked with a team and a staff of 32. And we've had others that are, you know, individual contractors that are also looking to try to get into the facility side. You know, one of the things that I, I think we believe distinguished Tim straight away is we just thought it was a core value match, right? And we thought that he really distinguished himself in talking about how not only does he have a desire to learn, but he has a demonstrated track record over time in kind of being able to learn on his feet and adapt. And so, and, and in the role of facilities director, you have a lot of different constituents. You know, you have parents, you have teachers, you have administrators. And usually they're talking with you, usually when there's a problem, right? Most of the time. And so, I think we thought that, we thought he would just be a wonderful core value match. And, and we can kind of work on coaching him up in areas that he might need to grow and develop in. And, you know, it also feels kind of good to be able to hire a Wakefield guy. Right? And so, I'm sure for him, it's going to be a blessing and a challenge. But it's really great to, to have you here. So we'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
If I could just chime in as well, I'm doing the interviews. Getting to know someone over just a couple of minutes of interview, the whole process, you know, everyone's trying to put their best foot, foot forward, and we're trying to entice the best candidate. But, but like Doug said, just from the beginning, it just, it just felt like Tim already knew the players, he already knew the schools, he was familiar with the community. And just talking to him about his family, his wife, his, his son, you, you just knew that this was going to be the right decision for Wakefield Public Schools. That being said, Bob, what we've gone through for the past two years with COVID, I can't say enough. I mean, just being a team player, pivoting, that, that's a word that we've used so much, but whether it- But whether it's nights, weekends, um, buying masks, buying face shields, uh, we've been through a lot, but I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your new family and your new job and.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Bob is expecting a, a new baby.
Yep.
Bob's fam, Bob's white best, I shouldn't say Bob. My life would correct me very quickly if, uh, if she were here.
And expecting in a different way.
And, yes, and so the, right, the Shirley family is expanding. And so, um, and I, I couldn't agree more, Bob. I think that, you know, in a lot of ways, you have redefined this space. I do think sitting next to Tim, you're gonna need to step up your game in the suit department.
We talked earlier about that.
The, the evolution of school committee, that, I was, I was dressed like that my first time. You get more comfortable with everybody, Doug, right?
You're gonna be in torn jeans by the end of next week.
But all, all kidding aside, Bob, I think that, and, and really I think you helped us get our statement of interest over the line with the MSBA. Um, I don't know that we could have done that without your expertise and your, your contribution there. You know, you helped us get our statement of interest over the line, um, to get a new roof on, on the Greenwood. Um, you helped manage that project with all the wrinkles that came with it. Um, and so, you know, I, again, I think you've redefined this role. And, uh, I think that the fact that you're spending two weeks to do a turnover, I think really just speaks to your level of professionalism and commitment. And I, I think Beverly's very, they're lucky to have you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm wanting a phone call away, right?
Tim, I don't know what your philosophy is on tents, but if you even mention the word tent, Bob breaks out in a cold sweat at this stage, so. One of my moments with him, I brought up, oh, I can give you a tent, he goes, no more tents, I'm so sick of tents. What a, it was a priceless moment, so.
You know, Mike, I'm looking out for the, the taxpayer of Wakefield's best interest, where there's certain, certain areas we need to spend money and in certain areas I think that benefit.
I was gonna give you the tent. But thanks for everything, Bob, it's been, it's been a pleasure.
Same.
Um, I, I'll just, uh, close if there's no other comments on this one. Um, Tim, when we were talking about, uh, you getting hired at our recent, um, subcommittee meeting, um, we talked a lot about kind of what you bring around relationships, right? And kind of knowing the players and knowing the people and that is so hard, right? That, that's like, I think, the hardest part of the job, the tactical part of the job, um, anybody can learn, but the relationships take time. And the fact that you come in kind of having those relationships, I think, just puts us, um, way ahead of the game, uh, and especially in a difficult year. I think we were all sad, Bob, to hear your news, right? Um, particularly after, um, such, uh, dedicated performance from, by you, um, leading through kind of COVID. But to know, kind of to have someone like you, Tim, that already kind of knows the, the people and the players is just going to make that transition so much smoother. So I'm, I'm super excited to have you, I think we all are, are very excited, while we're all also very sad to see Bob go. So I think it's, it's, um, appropriate to say for the whole committee, welcome and lots of luck to you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you as well.
That's it for me.
Alright, um, you guys are, are welcome to depart. Yeah, you guys do, or, yeah, or stay if you want. Alright, so we are on to subcommittee reports. So for finance and facilities, we've met twice since the meeting on the 13th. Uh, we met on the 15th and we, of July, and then we met on the 5th of August. And in all honesty, we've talked about mostly all of the things that we talked about tonight. Um, we talked about kind of closing out the year. Um, we talked about, um, the, the beginnings of opening of school and things that we needed to consider and when we were going to talk about it. Yeah, we talked about, uh, the transfers. And really, the only, the only thing that I don't think we talked about tonight, that we've talked about in those two meetings, was a little bit of discussion around, um, long-term planning. And just thinking about, um, kind of what the 10-year plan looks like and, you know, as we kind of come out of COVID and thinking about enrollment and where do we, where do we see ourselves, um, needing, you know, how, how do we think about the bigger picture? Um, and I think, um, prior to COVID, there was some discussion about putting a master plan together and then from a budget perspective, um, that didn't make it in, you know, COVID hit. Um, and so I think we're not ready to talk about kind of long-term plans, although it was, it was a good, healthy conversation that we talked about, kind of the fact that we don't have a lot of options. Um, it's not like we've got a lot of land sitting around, we don't have a lot of money to build new schools, we're building a new high school. Um, but we were talking through just what enrollment looks like and what we're going to be able to handle and with the development going on in town. Um, so I was just, um, thankful that we put that discussion on the table and, and at least started it. Um, I think there's a lot more, um, discussion to be had, um, but I, I did want the committee to know that we, I feel like every time we meet as a finance and facilities, um, team, we're always very much focused on kind of what's going on with budget right now, what's going on with, um, with grants, um, what's going on, um, with the buildings. And we, we kept not being able to have that kind of long-term discussion, so it was nice to just get it on the table. Nothing was kind of definitively talked about other than like, hey, we need to be looking at enrollment and, and really we're in good shape with the Galvin and we'll be in good shape with the high school. And so elementary schools is really the place that we need to think about. Um, so it was a, a, a good kind of healthy conversation that I, I would say is like a starter point to future conversations that, that should probably be happening. So that was my update for finance and facilities. Um, Mike, you're gonna give a quick update on labor and personnel?
It's very quick.
I was gonna say that.
Okay, that takes care of that one. I'll take the next one too. Which won't be quite as quick, but I'll try to make it fairly quick. Uh, so with student services, we met on July 21st. Uh, Doug was in Wyoming, Montana, Montana. So Doug wasn't there, so, but I think it was Rosie's first visit.
She visited with us.
Had she visited us before? I can't remember. So Cara and Rosie were there, so it was, it was nice to have, you know, some time with Rosie, so to speak. I mean, Cara was obviously very helpful as well and it sounds like she's been a huge resource for Rosie, so thanks for that. So we, we just got a chance to ask some questions, get to know Rosie better, have her get to know us a little bit better, so that was part of the meeting. And then, uh, we had talked previously about the fact that there were going to be principal retreats that were going to take place. So a while ago, we had kind of put together our wish list and the hope is we'll get some more input from Doug and Cara about what the principals are looking for at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday. And start to, well, first of all, we have to figure out a, a definitive meeting time, because that's been a little challenging over the summer. But I think we have to start thinking about what it's going to be like when school starts. But then if we can take that list and somewhat prioritize it, so we can start to knock things off or at least make progress on some initiatives going forward. So that's really where we are, I don't know if I missed anything, Amy or Amy? Okay, that's it.
And then Stephen, you're gonna give an update on policy and communications?
Uh, yeah. So, uh, so the policy and communications subcommittee, the, actually the last time we met was July 23rd. So, uh, we have an upcoming meeting next week on the 17th, uh, at 4:00 PM, I believe that's Tuesday. Um, so that'll be three and a half weeks since we've met, so I think we're, we have some things to talk about. We'll be discussing sort of the intern, uh, positions that we've discussed before, um, for our communications portion. Um, I think we, we have yet to hear from, um, any of the colleges that we've reached out to, um, for intern positions. So we're looking to see what other options might be on the table, um, so we'll have a discussion about that. Um, we'll be discussing, uh, mask, uh, policy and other return to school policy and if we need to amend anything. And then we'll also be, uh, talking about a, a draft of a mascot and logo policy that we've, um, begun to sort of put together. I think just in the space of, as we talked to, to Ms. Presser, um, at the retreat about the, what the resolution is and as it stands as a policy, it felt like it was a policy set in a, a point of time. And so I think what we'd like to see is, is the, the potential to have a policy that would sort of just be more sort of encompassing what our core values are and, um, and that would sort of, uh, hold for any other cases that might come up in the future. So that's what we're talking about.
Great.
Um, and kind of segues into what I was gonna, um, bring up. So I had, um, some questions about the current resolution and wanted to ask if it's something that can be brought to the, um, subcommittee on their level. And I don't know what the best way to do that, if, um, if I were to share some of the things that I have jotted down or to bring it to you guys. I'm not sure what the best plan of action would be.
Yep.
For that.
So at the retreat, we talked about, um, you would bring it to the table, which you've just kind of done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we believe that it's work that belongs in the policy and communication subcommittee, which we had talked about at the retreat as well. Um, I think we also talked about, um, the desire to, for it to be pretty, um, direct feedback on the particular things within the resolution that you, um, would like revisited or looked at, right? So I think there's a couple of ways you could do that, you could come to the meeting on the 17th with that, that feedback. Um, although you would not be able to kind of deliberate in that discussion, I don't think, because of, um, that would be a quorum.
Right.
Um, you could also call Stephen or Kevin, um, or Amy, right? Probably any one, I, it probably should be Kevin, just as chair, to share that feedback directly with him if you couldn't come to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I do think it's important to have it in writing though, also besides kind of the, the conversation that you would have. And then it would become the work of the subcommittee to kind of re, um, to look at what you're proposing, um, and then bring it back to this group for consideration.
Okay.
So.
Can we task them to?
Yep.
To look at that?
Yep, we, yep, we can, assuming that you're gonna, you'll make that, you'll follow that process. That we just talked about, but yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Tuesday at 4:00.
Tuesday at 4:00, perfect.
I think the, uh, I can send you the, the link, but it's on the, yeah.
That would be great, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so that's all the subcommittee reports. So we have, uh, another school committee meeting coming up on the 24th. Um, yeah, any future, um, topics for that agenda that we need to think about? I think we're gonna have a big one in the, the discussion around coming back to schools.
On the 24th?
On the 24th.
We, we may, um, need an executive session. Um, for any MOUs that need to be looked at in regard to, um, opening school, which could affect the WEA. Right now, you know, I, we will meet with them ahead of time to, to kind of talk, talk that through. Um, I'm, I'm not anticipating that there is really anything new that we haven't done last year or created an MOU four that might, you know, um, preclude us from updating some past MOUs and just really talking through, um, different scenarios.
Should we try to have a labor relations subcommittee meeting next week before it, Doug? What do you think? I don't thi, I think we have one this week that we canceled because nobody, Tom and Kevin weren't gonna be here.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you know.
We have Tom, but, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't know wh, when Tom's back next week.
Yeah, I don't either, um, okay.
So I, I think it's six at one, half dozen the other, I think we're gonna meet with, our plan is to meet with the WEA leaders. Um, and just to talk about where we are in reopening, talk about, you know, to revisit, and like I said, we're revisiting all of our, our previous plans. Um, we will also kind of revisit our, our past MOUs, um, to kind of, just to update that with labor.
When you meeting with them, I'm sorry, Doug.
Tuesday afternoon at 4:00.
Alright, so probably meeting before that, hopefully wouldn't be particularly helpful.
No, I'd be the next Tuesday in the morning before.
Before, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Um, professional development plans? Did we, I don't, have we gone through those? My brain is like foggy on that, have we talked about what the plan is?
We shared in the spring, professional development.
We did, um.
The plan for this.
We haven't gone into, to greater detail, I feel like that could be a whole presentation, which I could quickly whip together for the next.
If August is too soon, that's fine.
No, it's not, we've honestly been planning it since last spring and, um, chipping away, um, we had a meeting with our PD committee in the spring to really help set the stage for planning. Um, it's something that's been just in the works since last spring, but I think you're right, we haven't really, um, gone into too, uh, great detail about the plan. Um, certainly on the 24th, I'm happy to, to go over it.
That's, that's probably a 45-minute presentation.
Yeah, so we may wanna table that for a different.
We might wanna move that to September.
Yeah, that's fine, that's totally fine. Yeah, we can, we can table that. And, and just, um, for clarity, I mentioned it during my retreat update, we talked about meeting to talk about goals and district goals, because we didn't get through that presentation on the 31st, or the discussion on the 31st. So I don't have the dates in front of me, but I'm thinking, I think it's the 21st of September is, uh, in between our two regular meetings. It looked like that date worked for everybody, so I'm gonna kind of declare that we're gonna meet that day, I've gotta just figure out kind of what time and where.
Great.
Good.
Um, if anybody has any other agenda items, I know we still owe you, um, Safe Streets, but you and I had some back, back and forth around the, the specific questions that we, that we're looking to get answered.
Yep.
And I don't think we have anything else kind of lined up, so, okay. School committee comments, um, Amy Wall?
I don't have any tonight.
Okay, uh, Amy Lehman?
Hi, uh, so last year on August 12th, 2020, I sat at home on the edge of my seat, wondering if school was even gonna let students in. And, and the school committee voted on the hybrid plan, so, and this year, a year later, we actually know we're gonna get back in school, it's just what it's gonna look like. And I know I asked a lot of questions about the change in the masks for the, and I wasn't advocating either way, it was more just that we sent this email, that this was the summer programs and we changed courses and I, and a community member asked and I didn't, I didn't know and I, so I'm just looking for more transparency, I guess, if we're gonna make changes like that. Um, and bridging on that, I just want to thank all the, the parents, community members that emailed us to share their thoughts and their feelings and their insight of how they feel about masks. It's important, I learn from, I read every single one and they all make me think differently and make me research a little more, so, so thank you for that. And lastly, um, Thursday's the last day of the extended school year, another successful year. Uh, my daughter's in that program and she had a great year. The, I think, thing she talks about most is the high school helpers or the, the younger ones. I, um, every year she has a new buddy, so, so thank you to those families for bringing up such great kids.
Uh, Stephen?
Um, I'd just say, uh, our, our kids are really excited for a full, uh, return. Um, one of the, like, other people in the spring listening for songbirds, we don't live so far away from the high school. Um, I heard the marching band practicing this afternoon and, and the kids heard it. And, and it was just such a welcome, like, it's just one of those things that you come to expect. Um, and so it's, um, just really appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done, parents, um, educators, administration, um, in getting us to this point. And, and we're excited for, uh, for what the fall holds.
Mike?
Nope, I'm all set, okay, thank you.
I'm all set too, so we'll go ahead and, um, motion for adjourn.
Okay, move it to school committee, adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, August 10th, 2021.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor? And we've got a five to zero vote. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Alright.